Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Let the record show, we have six board members present. Dr. Robbie Buckett is on the line, and Mr. Figures is en route and will be joining us shortly. Board members, we do need to amend the agenda. I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda with the movement of items eight, C, and eight D into executive session. So we'll take those up. So with that requested change, is there a motion to approve, to amend the agenda?
So moved, definitely.
Mrs. Johnson has moved, Ms. Higginor is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, before us, we have the minutes for the August 16, 2022, and August 29, 2022, special board meeting. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes and ask any questions. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, definitely.
Dr. Harrison has moved, Ms. Higginor is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. With that, we are on to the superintendent's report. And just for the public who is watching and who is with us tonight, we are joined by Dr. Michael Cormack, who will be sitting in for Dr. Eric Green, who had a loss in the family. He is with family, but I assure you, he has been in touch all weekend with both the administration and with members of the board. So tonight, Dr. Cormack, we will turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Good evening. We'll begin with the superintendent's report video.
Hey, I'm Elijah Joy. I'm much as M E O kid. I'm a JPS scholar, and it's time to get pre-K ready with me. Here's the deal. Your mommy and daddy are gonna have a lot of stuff. So do I do. A birth certificate. Here's mine for baby joy. Shot, beggars, wait, shot? Nuh-uh. Absolutely not. And two proofs of residency. Once you get all this stuff together, your parents are gonna do the grown-up part. See you later.
For more information on how to enroll your little star in the Jackson Public Schools Pre-K program, visit enrolljps.com.
Microsoft TechSpark made a $10,000 investment to help establish the new Academy of Information Technology at Callaway High School. Students will enroll in the Information Technology Academy for the first time this school year. This Career Academy provides a college preparatory curriculum with a career and technical focus. The Academy of Information Technology will prepare 35 students for their place by offering hands-on experience. Callaway High School is also one of the seven high schools in Mississippi that partnered with the Microsoft TEELS Technology Education and Literacy in Schools Program that connects classroom teachers with tech industry volunteers. College and career readiness manager, Jana Williams, will participate as one of 15 in the National College attainment Network's Fellowship Program. This exciting professional development opportunity will allow Mrs. Williams to continue building her skills and knowledge to become a leader in the college and career readiness field. Mrs. Williams is a proud Jacksonian who graduated from Forest Hill in 1999 and earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in economics with an emphasis in accounting from Tugalo College. Additionally, she earned a Master of Business Administration, Master of Public Accountancy, and a Master of Arts in Teaching from Jackson State University. She also received a Specialist in Educational Leadership degree from the University of Mississippi. Congratulations to Mrs. Jana Williams. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at www.youtube.com/JPSITV.
We want to offer a special thanks to our public engagement and instructional television team for the video. And I just love the video of JPS scholar Elijah Joy. Board members, you'll likely recall that Ms. Elijah Joy performed for us here last spring during our board member appreciation meeting, and she has quite a set of little pipes. We're grateful for, to have scholars like Elijah Joy now as ambassadors of our district's commitment to a strong start and providing access to high-quality pre-kindergarten for every four-year-old in Jackson. We are still actively enrolling scholars pre-K through 12th grade throughout the district. That work continues. Our chief of staff, Dr. William Merritt, will now provide us with a brief update on some of the latest enrollment trends in our district. Dr. Merritt.
Great evening to Dr. Seaback, Board of Trustees, Dr. Cormack, in the absence of Dr. Green and JPS family. The team is working to pull up my PowerPoint, but I will provide you some just registration updates quickly. Our projected enrollment this year was 19,154, and as a reminder in a previous presentation, we, on average, lose 4% of our student population from the previous year. So based on last year's enrollment, we were hoping to enroll 19,154 students. Currently, we have 18,162 students enrolled, of which we have 17,451 applications submitted. So let me just talk about the difference. The 711 students were the difference.
Bless you.
Is. So although, when we talk about the 18,162, those are actual warm bodies that have entered our buildings. However, that 711, that's outstanding, those are parents that have not completed the registration process. And so it's important that those students, or those parents, rather, complete the registration so that we can really count this 18,162. However, 17,451 represents the applications that have been submitted and that we're currently processing at the school level. The next slide, please. So as it relates to next steps, schools are continuing to process the applications that have been submitted. Schools have been doing a great job in working with parents to complete the registration process. And let me just share with you, this can be a challenging process, and our schools are very nurturing in their approach. Parents put children on the bus, and we receive them, whether they have completed the registration process or not. Schools have gone over and beyond in making contact with parents, and I can't underscore that enough. So per state statute, at some point in time, we are required to disenroll the child if the parent fails to complete the registration process. And let me just say that this is a, the last option that we will do. We will continue to work with parents to get the registrations mostly. That's what we needed, the proofs of residence, pardon me, is what's needed to complete the registration. So we're happy with where our numbers are, and we will continue to, continue to work with our parents in completing the registration process. Are there any questions that you may have? Yes, ma'am, Dr. Harrison.
Yes, Dr. Merritt, help me understand step number three. If parents fail to properly enroll, we have to disenroll. What, is there a timestamp on that, like by such and such a date?
Right, so typically, we have, I know that some schools sent letters home earlier, but this is around the timeframe that we do that, before we submit month-one data, which be, which will be at the end of this month. We want them to complete the enrollment process, but we want to try, we hope that they will complete it as soon as possible so we can get the count for those scholars.
So if a neighborhood organization wanted to let their neighbors know, the third week in September, it needs to be done, is that a good thing to say?
Friday.
Okay, thank you. Tell me straight, Friday?
Yes, ma'am. Because honestly, some of them have been in school since August 8th, and so it's something that should have been done. However, we have, again, schools have been gracious, assistant superintendents have been providing the leadership and support and encouragement to encourage the principals to get students enrolled. However, it's just, with some parents, it just takes a little bit more, takes a little bit more of a push.
Thank you. I've got two questions. One is, have we been able to narrow down what it is, what's the issue with the enrollment? Or is it just, is it a multitude of issues?
Well, of course, I would say one thing is this, the requirement of students having to have parents enroll children annually. That can be a cumbersome process. However, we did begin enrollment in April of this year. So there has been a lot of time, and parents have had a lot of opportunities to do this. Not only that, through the pre-K registration on Saturdays, and then we've done other special registrations, we have provided ample opportunity. So I really, Attorney Johnson, I can't specifically say what, some additional challenges that may exist that I'm not aware of, but I can't share anything.
The only thing that I could add would be, at certain grade levels, we do have new immunization requirements. So at seventh grade, where we've seen particularly high number, in addition to the two proofs of residency, there's additionally the T-DAP. And so climate and wellness, Ms. Amanda Thomas, they've hosted events to try to make those shots more available and easier to do so that we don't actually have an issue with, with state reporting. So I would imagine, as we look at that 711 difference, there are some grade levels where there are more acute challenges, particularly related to immunization.
Okay. And so then my second question is, the projected enrollment and the actual enrollment, do we have any idea why it is about 1,000 students short?
We don't. When we last checked, so we don't know how many students have left the district as of yet, and we're in the process of cleaning that, that data up. I know that as of two weeks ago, at, when we looked at the data, we had 600 and approximately 11 students that were new to the district. And so once we do the wash between what students have transferred out and what's new, we'll, I'll be able to better answer that question for you.
Dr. Merritt, perhaps it's helpful, can you provide any context about when enrollment traditionally stabilizes, where we can get at the figure that we can look at for end of year?
Right, so it stabilizes, it begins to stabilize in October, honestly. And it typically peaks in the spring. February, March is, it increases for whatever reasons there may be, but around October is really when we typically complete the registration process in terms of all students being in school.
Is this, is this a typical trend for our district or unique, I mean, like, do other districts have this kind of challenge around us, or is it just JPS?
So this is particular for our district, but what I will say, Ms. Thompson, in terms of other urban districts across the country, this is a trend. In terms of when students enroll and how they enroll.
You have any numbers for students that we may have lost to charter?
Not as of yet. We are working to do the transfer, records transfer request, and so I will be able to provide that information soon.
Just like us, those charter districts have not all reported to the state as well. And so when they do their first month count, we'll also have access to that information and can provide a more robust update to be able to inform the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess similarly, are we able to track students moving to neighboring districts? I'm sorry, similarly, are we able to track students who move to neighboring districts?
Yes, yes, sir. Based on the records request, we are able to track where, where students are going. I just do want to note that as we are experiencing an enrollment decline, it's the same with our metro districts as it impacts the state. Everyone is experiencing, experiencing an enrollment decline throughout the state. So it is something that we are closely monitoring, and I'm in touch with several other enrollment departments in the metro area, and it's just something that we're all going through. So not only is it a JPS problem, but it seems to be a state problem where families are going, or where children are going, and it's not necessarily private school either. So that's another thing, based on a conversation that I was having last week, is that that enrollment is not necessarily increasing as well. So it is a question to where our children are going.
Is this a new trend, assuming, maybe perhaps since COVID?
In terms of the declining public school enrollment? Yes, ma'am. And we're able, we're tracking this, there's a data source that we're using through the city of Jackson where we're able to really strategically track this information and where families are going in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So today, our scholars return to in-person learning throughout the district, and we're excited to report that water pressure was vastly improved in nearly all schools. At Forest Hill High School, where pressure remains low, we still were committed to returning to in-person learning, but with bus service that was provided by grade level to four other JPS campuses, and they were received with open arms. I got an opportunity to visit Lanier today with Ms. Marshall Thomas, the 12th graders, and our self-contained scholars from Forest Hill were there, and a complement of the administrative team from Forest Hill was also sent to support scholars there. In partnership with the city, we've identified a leak at Maddox and Raymond Road that is likely the cause of reduced pressure at Forest Hill. We'll continue with in-person and satellite campus instruction tomorrow as we allow the city to work to restore water pressure at Forest Hill. While water pressure has been substantially improved, we do remain under a boil water alert within the city. Our child nutrition team and our operations team in partnership with Ms. Faulkner and Partners in Education have been distributing bottled water to all schools. Water fountains remain shut down, and we will provide fresh bottled drinking water at all schools. We are also just so appreciative of our community, both locally, state, and nationally, for rallying around our city during the water crisis. We're grateful to the many individuals and organizations who have given so generously to provide clean drinking water to our scholars and their families. One particular organization who joins us this evening is especially worthy of our thanks, Rural Central Kitchen, if y'all could stand so that we can recognize you. We want to thank you. Our friends at Rural Central Kitchen, which is a nonprofit, non-governmental organization devoting to providing meals in the wake of natural disasters. They were founded in '22 by Chef Jose Andres. The organization has prepared food in Haiti following its devastating earthquake and has been engaged recently in Ukraine. They have also been excellent partners during our ongoing water challenges, including last year's ice storm, and more recently, setting up potable water tanks at our JPS campuses. And they are working in partnership to provide a water tank at each of our schools. And so we're really excited about that. Here you'll see some photos of a recent tank event that happened at Van Winkle Early Childhood Center, and we're so appreciative of their support, which is valued at over $250,000. So again, we're so appreciative to you all, what a difference that, that really truly makes for us. For any individuals or groups who are looking to contribute to our ongoing water or flood recovery needs, we want to encourage you to donate in one of the following ways. As I mentioned, Ms. Thea Faulkner, who is our Director of Partners in Education, we have information, and it is hyper-length, this is out on social media, but you have the information here about ways that you can contribute to our JPS scholars and families. As well, we are partnered with the Community Foundation for Mississippi, and they have set it up, a dedicated fund to support water needs within the broader Jackson community. Some items to consider for donations include fresh bottled water, portable, portable restrooms, hand washing stations, sanitizing wipes, prepackaged meals, laundering service, portable AC units, and delivery trucks, MiFi units, which help our scholars to connect in case we need to pivot again to virtual instruction, gift cards for families in needs, portable showers, and funding support. All of these things are things that our community has rallied around, but feel free to continue to contribute because the needs are ongoing. This team has also been working actively to ensure that all of our classrooms within the district have a committed and certified teacher to instruct our scholars. The board has asked for periodic updates around our staffing, and so Dr. Tommy Knolls, our Director of Recruitment, has provided the following slide as an update on how our staffing looks as we enter this week of school. You'll note, board members, that as of today, we are 87.7% staffed, with a larger share of vacancies among our classified positions. That's inclusive of a number of our operations teams, which are, which are having some challenges, and we're, some additional work is being done to support those vacancies and to fill them. Our certified vacancies are substantially down, however, and we are at 95% staffed. And so we're very excited about the positive progress that has been made in that area with fewer than 100 vacancies. And so this puts us on track with where we were, even with some of the COVID waivers of last year. You'll note the, of the filled positions, 1,702, there's an asterisk next to it for limited service. Those are our team members who are awaiting certification, and with this board's support, we have offered those members who are just waiting in the queue for the Mississippi Department of Education to receive their licenses to be recipients of contingency contracts, so they can be brought on as full team members while they await their certification. We wanted to provide this snapshot of how things look at this present moment, and we will also commit to hiring for vacancies, but also evaluating the right size of our team as we look at enrollment trends and where we land in enrollment in October. And then finally, I want to just take a moment of personal privilege to acknowledge what an honor it is to sit at this table and to serve as our district's deputy superintendent. I have the great responsibility to steward our district's academic and support programming, and I could not be more proud of the team of talented and empowered leaders and central office, support members, and teachers who operate our district every day. Last week, as our water crisis caused us to pivot to virtual instruction, our teachers and leaders were nimble. They distributed devices and didn't let instruction take a backseat. Even as many of our team members were personally impacted in their own homes, they rallied to support our scholars and kept pushing to make sure that learning occurred. It was night and day to see how quickly, flexible, and adaptable they were, even in comparison to the early days of virtual instruction. They each demonstrated our core value of a growth mindset. I'm also really appreciative of our many classified and operations team members who also never missed a beat, and who prepared meals at various campuses, even despite water challenges, who checked toilets and water pressure levels, who answered phones from concerned families, and who kept the district going during a really rough time. To our public engagement team, who communicated the changes and pushed out communication through many channels, as an example, last Friday alone, our team pushed out more than 31,028 school-status text messages, so our parents and families would be kept informed. We appreciate each of you and the work we do, and the work that we do together. We truly are Team JPS. And then finally, yep, we can clap for that absolutely, to the team. And I'll just say, finally, as a proud JPS parent, I want to say to my fellow JPS parents, thank you for your flexibility and understanding as we weather these challenges together. Jacksonians are resilient and tough folks, and we find a way to band together and make good things happen. As a parent, I want to again thank our incredible teachers and leaders who kept instruction going for Kennedy, Madison, and Max, and to my wife, Crystal, for monitoring virtual instruction while working from home. You, Crystal, and our JPS parents are the true MVPs. We are so glad to be back in our buildings, and as we look ahead, no challenges remain, but again, we are stronger together. So board, this concludes this deputy superintendent's report, and I pass the meeting back to Dr. Seaback.
Thank you, Dr. Cormack. And board members, any questions, comments? Saw two thumbs up from Dr. Harrison, so that's, that's worth a lot. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
This is a great report. But I, I wanted to get an understanding, you said there was a leak identified at Maddox and Raymond Road?
Thank you for bringing that up.
It was, it was identified by us, or by the city, or you all were notified?
It was identified according to Ms. Robinson at, by the city, and they reported that information to us as they were working in partnership to help to us to understand why the pressure at Forest Hill was substantially lower than any other building.
And continues, even before all of this, I mean, they were having issues?
Yes, ma'am, they were. They, they continue to have issues, and even as citywide pressure has improved substantially, they have continued acute challenges, and it's, it's gotten lower. So we had a, a bit of an uptick, but we do have word from Mayor Lamumba that they're working on it, but one of the issues that he indicated in the press conference just a few days ago, as the pressure improves, it may exacerbate challenges within the pipes, the brittle pipes, so that as that pressure goes through, we may anticipate other leaks to come through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. And thank you, Dr. Cormack, for, for an excellent report. And I just do want to echo your sentiments for all of the team members. Again, I know many folks worked all weekend to, to make sure we could get our scholars in school today, and we don't take that for granted. So again, thank you, everyone. So with that, board members, I don't believe we have any, oh, we're on the public comment. I do believe we have a, no public comment? Okay. So just to reiterate, committee members who would like to make a public comment should email their requests to Ms. Roslyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 on the day of the meeting. The board certainly values public comment, and we encourage all to come and share. So next, I don't believe we have any board reports tonight, and so we will move on to our bond update, and Ms. Sandra Robinson, we'll invite her up to give the report along with, oh, gosh, I just had a, Ms. Nina Franklin as well, so, sorry, Ms. Franklin, I had a, I had a moment.
Don't worry, we've had our moments too these last few days with the water crisis. Good evening, board members, Dr. Seaback, Dr. Cormack. We have the pleasure of presenting the bond update, and we have not been in front of you since June, so we have a lot to, of progress to update you on. With each bond update, we do provide a construction update as well as a financial report update. Ms. Franklin's going to lead us off with the construction updates, highlighting Hughes, Lake Oak Bars, Rains, and the high school libraries. Ms. Franklin?
Okay. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we'll start at Hughes Field, looking at the progress over these last months. Our turf installation is about ninety-five percent complete. We see our Jackson branding, the rubberized surface on the track has been installed, as well as all the field events, and the bleacher retrofitting is still in progress. Also, each of the buildings at Hughes Field have been renovated. Here on the left, we see what the locker rooms look like previously. All the locker rooms have received new flooring, LED lighting, and we've gotten a new kind of hanging system in each locker room. Also in our concession buildings, on the left, we see the previous condition of the millwork, the floors. On the right, we see we have new cooling doors, updated LED lighting, new epoxy floors. We also have new millwork in our restrooms. We've actually were able to expand the capacity, it's actually to fit all of the seating that's there. We brought everything up to code, and we've actually doubled the amount of male and female restrooms on our home side. On the left, we see what the restrooms look like previously. Here's some other before photos where we had the old trough-style urinals, and these are some of our updated photos. Like I said, we've doubled the size of our male and female restrooms on our home side, and each restroom has received new epoxy flooring, all new plumbing in the chase walls, new plumbing fixtures, LED lighting, new partitions, and accessories. We have had some delays at Hughes Field. One of our longest delays was the turf. We did make some changes with our logo and updated our logo to the current logo and added the Jackson branding. There was a delay in that. We've had some vandalism on the site also, which has caused the contractor to have to reorder some things, like our cooling doors, some glass, so we're still waiting on some of those items. And we've also had some weather delays, which have stalled the parking lot. We've kind of had some setbacks in installing the catch basins there and the detention pond, but, and these delays have pushed our substantial completion date back to December. But the contractor is hopeful that we can finish our parking lot by the end of October. So like I said, the buildings are coming to a completion, we're mainly waiting on the parking lot at this point. Moving on to some of our elementary schools. At Lake, this is our third set of girls and boys restrooms that we were able to punch out, and the staff is able to use it now. They've received all new plumbing in the chase walls, new ceramic wall tile, epoxy floor, all new plumbing fixtures, partitions, and accessories. At Oak Forest Elementary School, this is the second set of girls and boys restrooms that have been updated with all new plumbing, plumbing fixtures, LED lighting, all new fixtures, partitions, and accessories. And at Raines Elementary School, this is the second set of girls and boys restrooms that have received those same upgrades. Now moving to some of our high schools, all of the library furniture has been delivered and installed. Here at Callaway, we've got new shelving, new lounge furniture in their signature orange and blue colors, new tables and chairs. At Capital City, we have new shelving, tables, chairs, and the new reading desk. At Forest Hill High School, we've got new library shelving, all new tables, chairs, and the red and blue lounge furniture. At Jim Hill High School, we've gotten their shelving and their tables and chairs. We did have an error with their lounge furniture, but it is set to be delivered in the next few weeks. At Lanier High School, they have all new shelving, new lounge furniture in maroon and gray, and new tables and chairs also. At Murrah High School, here we see their new tables, chairs, and the lounge furnitures in their blue and gray colors. At Provine High School, we have the same kind of style of the lounge furniture in the red and gray. They've also gotten new shelving, new tables, and chairs. At Winckford High School, we have their lounge furniture here on the left in their blue and gold, and they've also gotten new shelving and the new bar height tables. Next, Ms. Robinson will give us an update on our financials.
And Board members, I know you're trying to follow us with the presentation, so the one that you have was done on Wednesday. We received some feedback, and we incorporated some changes, and it's hot off the press, so Ms. Franklin and I were working up until 3:00 PM this afternoon making these adjustments. We just got delayed based on the water crisis, so we didn't do it, have an opportunity to do it before today. So we will provide Ms. Williams the correct copy to have, so you can look at this one as well. I'm sorry, you got the right one. Ms. Rosalyn is on it. So, because it looked like y'all were. I was just off. But thank you very much, Ms. Williams. For the financials, we have updated as of September 2nd, 2022, the amount expended in the encumbered is eighty-eight percent. That amount is, amount expended is seventy-eight point two percent, which is up from seventy-three point three percent, and that's from the June 30th, 2022 update. In the orange, you have the amount expended, which is about fifty-seven million dollars, and I want to spotlight the yellow, that's the amount unencumbered, and that's about eight point seven million dollars, and we'll get into details on a later slide on that amount. The next three slides give a school-by-school breakdown with the budget expenditures, encumbered amounts, and the budget balances. On the third slide of that, it does, the last two rows gives the administration its unallocated amount, and that's about two point five million dollars, and the total unallocated, unencumbered is about eight point seven million dollars, so that matches what was on the pie graph. Back in December 7th, 2021, we provided this slide. It gave the programming for the unencumbered and the interest earned, so what we were planning to do with the remaining unencumbered and interest earned amount. At that time, we listed drainage projects at various schools, that was Cardoza, Isabel, Kirkston, McWillie, Wells A-PAC renovations, Newell Field, baseball softball upgrades, the Hardy HVAC upgrades, as well as the library furniture high schools. At the special board meeting that was on August 29th, we did award the baseball softball improvements project. That cost was at four point six million dollars. Four million six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars was the exact award amount. Originally in the bond, as we went to the citizens for approval, we estimated that the baseball improvements would be one million dollars, so that far exceeds the one million dollars that we initially had in the bond referendum. But we are excited to say that the improvements will include natural grass upgrades as well as softball and batting cages. We will be improving the drainage and sewer line, as well as installing new lighting, fencing, and seating. So in total, with the Hardy Hughes Athletic Complex, we will have allocated and expended over fifteen million dollars in improvement in this area. So that includes the Hughes Field upgrades that we're currently doing, and also some additional work we're going to be doing at Hardy in order to bring that complete block to life. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask you briefly, the baseball softball field, where is that located?
Okay, let's see if I can get my little highlighter to work.
That's not...
Okay.
It's not part of Hardy Hughes, is it?
It is. So, I don't know how to get my...
I didn't realize that. You don't have to go back.
Okay. I'm sorry. So if you, at the upper right, that is Hughes Field, where it has football, soccer, and at the lower left, that is baseball, and also the softball field. And if you look at the upper left, that is Hardy and the little octagon. So that's the whole block there.
Great, thank you.
So what we have been able to do in red with the check shows those projects that are either completed, or substantially complete, or have been awarded. So from that original December 7th slide, we have completed the drainage projects at various schools. They are substantially complete, and we are doing the closeout documents now. The baseball softball upgrades, that was awarded at the August 29th board meeting, and then the high school library furniture, which you saw pictures of previously in this presentation. What we have remaining is in bold, the Wells A-PAC renovations, which we are planning to use extra funding in order to complete that project, Newell Field with bond funds, Hardy HVAC upgrades with bond funds, and McCloud renovations with extra funding. McCloud wasn't included on the previous slide. We had awarded it initially, but due to some price escalations, the contractor rescinded his bid, and we are in the process of rebidding that with extra funding. So what we're looking at now, with the eight point seven million dollars that I mentioned that's unallocated, over four million dollars was spent towards the baseball softball upgrade, so we have about four point one million dollars now in order, that's left in the bond funds. But we have identified some additional interest funding, and we're looking at those projects that we need to close out that currently have encumbered funds to release that, and that will be added to that four point one million dollars. So we're going to, plan is, between now and the next board meeting, we're going to go through those financials and have an accurate amount of what's to be allocated or available for Newell Field and also HVAC upgrades, because we're still committed to do Newell Field, we're just going to have to adjust how we're going to get that project completed. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Just one question, on the Hardy Hughes complex, the baseball softball fields, the baseball softball fields were listed as practice fields, are those practice, or will those be where games are played?
Where games are played, so we do need to adjust that wording.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question about, like, the work that has been done, has been done. Are you all seeing any issues, like, I guess, at this point, since the work is done, that you happen to go back and redo at some places that may not have been done correctly or done right? Because I've been told that some of the schools, like, brand-new restrooms, children are still not able to use, so is that often?
It happens, so what we're finding sometimes at restrooms in particular, where we may have a sewage backup that isn't, you know, directly impact, that does impact the restroom. It was constructed right, but it's where we have to get a plumbing company to jet out the sewer lines. We, everything is under a one-year warranty. What we do, we have the staff at each school, you know, let us know if there are any problems, and we get the contractor out to respond to those and make those adjustments. So just because it's completed doesn't mean that it just falls on JPS maintenance to do. We do pursue the contractor for any installation that's not to standards, to make sure that, you know, it doesn't become a maintenance issue for us.
Yeah.
But if you know of any, it sounds like you know of a school, so let me know what it is. I'll lie.
I'll contact you.
Well, this is good work to your team, kudos.
Thank you.
And Board, I just want to comment on those high school libraries, which look fantastic, and if you haven't had an opportunity to view them, it's pretty incredible, but as one of the things that you may not be aware of is that some of our junior and seniors have not experienced their high school libraries, given COVID and some of the work that's happening. So it is really truly transformative for them as a study space, as a place, as an extension of the learning, so we're very proud of the work that has been accomplished.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson, thank you, Ms. Franklin, and thank you, Dr. Cormac. All right, great report. Well, now we will move on with our information-only items, and we have a review of a request to renew the agreement between Maverick Health and the Jackson Public School District, and Dr. Amanda Thomas, our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness, will share this information.
Good evening, Dr. Seback, Board members, and Dr. Cormac, Deputy Superintendent. The administration presents to you for information item, a renewal, a review of the renewal agreement between Maverick Health and the Jackson Public School District. The purpose of this agreement is to continue the established and guided working relationship between Maverick Health and Jackson Public School District. The Mississippi Department of Health has contracted with Maverick Health as the laboratory to offer voluntary school-based COVID-19 screening. The purpose of this program is to provide an additional layer of prevention to slow the spread of COVID-19 in our school settings. Any staff member or scholar who grants consent to be tested may test at the site that will be provided. Although these mandates have been lifted and our COVID-19 cases have decreased, we wanted to provide an opportunity for our staff and our scholars to be tested free of charge. Just a bit of information, fourteen thousand twenty tests were administered during the school year of 21-22. Of those, three hundred and two were positive. Of those tested, nine hundred eighty-one were staff members, and two thousand three hundred ninety-three were students. If you look at those numbers, that's because many of the staff members and students were tested on a consistent weekly basis.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Board members, any questions? Great, thank you. Okay, Board members, next we'll move on to our information action items, and we have another request to approve a legacy scholars grant agreement with the Equal Justice Initiative, and Attorney Moore will present this information.
Good evening, Board President, and Dr. Seback, Board members, Dr. Cormac. The Office of the General Counsel recommends that the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees approve the grant agreement between Equal Justice Initiative and Jackson Public School District on behalf of Proline High School, and this grant is for our scholars to attend the Legacy Museum in Montgomery, Alabama, and the Malagis Grant Award is fifty-three hundred dollars.
Great, thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, any questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'd love to approve item A, 8A.
Dr. Hairston has moved, Ms. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Moore. Next, we have the request to approve RFP 202215 for our pool of partners. This includes Bailey Education Group, Kids First Education, Pamela Franklin LLC, and the Kirkland Group. Dr. Scott will present this information.
Good evening, Dr. Seback, Board members, and Dr. Cormac. The administration recommends review and approval of the lead partner contracts to provide administrative and instructional coaching support in response to RFP 202215 Pool of Lead Partners to Bailey Education Group, Kids First Education, Pamela M. Franklin LLC, and the Kirkland Group. We did receive a question, I'll go ahead and answer that now.
Thank you.
We were asked to share the data behind the decisions to recommend the lead partners, and so in school year 21-22, lead partner support was provided by the Bailey Education Group for English Language Arts, the Kirkland Group for Math and Kids First Education for pre-K through second-grade academic support in English Language Arts. Overall, district proficiency on math assessments increased in English Language Arts and math. In English Language Arts, the number of scholars scoring proficient or above increased from eighteen point three percent in 2021 to twenty-six point eight percent in 2022. In math, the number of scholars scoring proficient or above increased from nine point one percent in 2021 to twenty-one point four percent in 2022. Among schools supported by Kids First in school year 2021-22, there was an average increase of ten percent in English Language Arts performance from semester to third-term exams for kindergarten through second-grade students, and ninety-six percent growth on start early literacy from the beginning of the year to the end-of-year assessments. And that's for our pre-K students. Initial map data from school year 21-22 showed that Smith Elementary School is having the lowest proficiency in math among elementary schools, and so Pamela M. Franklin was recommended to provide support to Smith Elementary School.
Great, thank you, Dr. Scott. Board members, any additional questions?
I don't have a question, Dr. Seback, but it's good to see us making good upward progress, and we just appreciate all of our partners who joined us, because I know when this... this board was first seated, that was a real, we were sticklers about that, to put it politely. And I'm so glad that our, the work altogether is showing great improvements in our scholars. So thank you and your team and the parents out there who are helping as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. With that, is there a motion to approve the group of lead partners?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Scott. You will call, boy. We amended our agenda, so we will now move on to information action item E, the request to approve the termination of the educational data sharing and protection agreement with Safer Management in Jackson Public Schools. Dr. Merritt will explain this request.
Yes. Great evening again. The administration is recommending to terminate the current contract with Safer Management Educational Data Sharing and Protection Agreement. Based on the rationale, we have another RFP we would like to award, which includes some of the same services, products and services. And so we would like to terminate this agreement and recommend the upcoming agreement.
Great. And Dr. Merritt, I believe that's action item F, the COVID Tracking and Tracing Software Program. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any additional information to share on that? Because I think we'll just take these up together otherwise.
Yes, sir. So I'll go ahead and just proceed with the administration is recommending the award, RFP 202213 COVID Backing and Tracing Software Program to Safer Management Incorporated, and approval of the software program agreement with Safer Management. As you all are aware and in the rationale, you know, we are still having issues with COVID and the tracing is still relevant and the need for the service is still needed today. In addition to the software program, there are some additional features that we can benefit from. One being an attendance tracking system. And of course, we have some more conversation about attendance, but essentially, when a student enters the school, as we are scanning them and getting their temperature, we can also take attendance. This is a feature that's added so that it will help us better track our attendance. And this would be something offered pre-K 12. But specifically something we would love and we want to pilot in our high schools. So there are some additional features with the program that, the software program that it offers. And so we would like to proceed with this award of this RFP for a period of three years. A question was asked by Dr. Seavec. Last year, Kellogg Funds did pay for this service and we shifted, as we were, I don't think at that time, we had been yet approved for our ESR 2 and ESR 3 funding. So in order to pay for the service, we did, Dr. Green adjusted his Kellogg Strategic Priorities funding to pay for this service, but this is something that's eligible to be paid for under ESR funding. So we shifted this product under the ESR funding so that we can free up some of his funds for other strategic priorities within the district.
Great, thank you, Dr. Merritt. And it's my understanding that while we're terminating one agreement, the updated agreement or the new agreement is with the same company. Is that correct?
It's the same company, with an expanded scope of service.
Great, thank you. Any questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I shall move.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Ms. Figures has seconded the approval of items E and F. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, board members. Board members, next we have the consent agenda item finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? I did have one question, Mr. Burke, and it's on the 16th section lease. Really, the question, it's just from my understanding, it effectively was reappraised and there was no increase in the amount, and we need to reap, if you could just explain what we're being asked to approve.
Okay, so you're actually, you're approving the new lease. So as matter of process, every year in the lease, it calls on the eighth anniversary of the lease to be reappraised. We did go through that process. Unfortunately, the value of the property has not changed. So you're just renewing the lease with this leaseholder.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not an adjustment to the amount. The amount stays the same because the property value stays the same, but we're representing it to you as a matter of process.
Okay, and so even though it's a 40-year lease, every eight years it gets reappraised and regardless of whether it goes up, down, stays the same, we renew the lease?
Yes. It's not going to go down, but it will, it does go up.
Okay.
If the values in the property went up.
Okay.
But the property value didn't change.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, board members? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved. Ms. Harris has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item for personnel. Think that I do that right? Okay, thank you. Okay, great. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Board members, are there any questions? Board members, I had a question, and I believe Dr. Merritt is going to answer this. This is actually, since we're on the personnel, as we know, student loan forgiveness has been in the news, and currently there is the public student loan forgiveness program, which has a deadline as of the end of this month. And I know many of our teachers could be eligible, many of our staff could be eligible, and this is different from the announcement that we heard. This could be forgiveness of all the debt. And so what I wanted to ask the administration was, is if there are any, if there's any communication going out to our team, and if not, can we work to get the word out so that we can make sure that all of our eligible staff members can receive this service?
Yes, sir, Dr. Seavec. So it is something that we promote to, we use as a recruitment strategy as we recruit teachers to come into the district, but we are committed to getting additional communication out about this opportunity for our employees so that they can take advantage of this, because this is major and we want them to be eligible for it. So we are committed to getting additional communication out regarding this. And I do want to note, we also publicize and the Winter Read Loan Repayment Program as well, something that we use statewide for teachers. That's a fund, if teachers, and I think it's up to three years, it increases each year, but it's a fund that teachers can have access to within the state to help repay loans for teaching, particularly, I think it's, well, it's eligible, if I'm not mistaken, up to $10,000 for the Winter Read. But we had a number of teachers, we worked with the individuals that worked with that program, and we had a number of teachers that were approved and received repayment last year through that. So in addition to the federal opportunity, there are some things locally that we promote as well for our teachers.
Great, thank you very much. Again, I think that has an October 31st deadline for the full forgiveness. So again, anything we can do to promote that. It sounds, and again, recognizing the work that's already being done.
Yes, sir.
Generational opportunities.
So noted. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Merritt, and thank you, Dr. Cormac.
Ms. Lyons, our Executive Director, indicated that since July 1st, they've had an uptick in those who have been certified. There's an attestation that the Human Resources Team has to do to indicate their service in the district. And so they've processed over 50 applications to date, but want to, certainly, we will take the advice to further communicate that so that no teacher or staff member who is eligible for this really incredible opportunity misses out.
Great. Thank you. Okay, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel?
Some moved.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Ms. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, board members, we do have the two items that we moved to executive session. Is there a motion to consider the holding of an executive session?
Some moved.
Second.
Mrs. Johnson has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for a good, efficient meeting tonight.